Good evening, welcome to the Town of Anquon January Planning Board Meeting. Jay, you take call the role, please.
Joe Parker.
President.
Palmer Erwin.
President.
Aaron Rader.
Here.
Andrew Rader.
Andrew Rader here, yes.
Robert here. Aaron Robertson.
Here.
Tom Rosal.
He said he was gonna be on Zoom, I don't know.
Hello, Patrick.
Yeah, I'm here, just couldn't get unmuted.
Okay. Sneaking up on us. The TV's broken.
I'm here.
So, we have one member that is participating on Zoom. Based on state law and our council's interpretation, members that are participating on Zoom can or take in the discussion and comment, but for various reasons are not permitted to vote. So, we have six members present at the meeting, and we have more than a forum, so.
Is that a state rule or is that a town rule?
It can be adjusted, I think, by the town, but given the state law, what I was told at another planning board meeting was, and it happened to be the chairman that had zoomed in, they have to note, you have to publish the location of the person. And potentially, a member, a participant can go to the location. So somebody, if you're doing it from your house, somebody could show up at your house to participate in the meeting.
They changed that, they changed that. I was just looking, I was, yeah, I was, I got the text of the thing, you don't have to do that. As long as there, I think, as long as there is a location you can go to, you're okay. It doesn't have to be that you go to here. So I have the text of the thing at some point, I'll share it with you guys.
Yeah, that was.
Antigua, but you're welcome to come down here.
Yeah, that was an interpretation I got.
Make it more interesting.
So, that being said, approval of the minutes, do we wanna? We just got them tonight, we wanna wait till the end of the meeting, we want more time, what's the consensus?
I read through them, I didn't have a common sense of this. There may have been a couple of spelling errors in there, but.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the December?
Motion to approve the December.
Fifteen.
Minutes of the planning board meetings.
Second.
Second.
Well, in favor, all right, okay. Minutes are approved. Correspondence, Jay.
Um, so Joe and I had a meeting with John Lines and Kim Garrison regarding an application that was on planning board agenda. I had a conversation with Nan regarding several applications. And I also asked her if she could conduct a training on the new forms. So we have kind of initially scheduled that training for March 7 via Zoom at 5:00 p.m. If we would like me to schedule it for in person, I would have to get authorization to do so, but letting you know that we want that in person. And then following the conversation with Nan, I did send some correspondence to Ronnie Brook, and also to Boilin advising them on some changes to the concept. So, I believe that Ronnie Brook will withdraw their application and then reapply under the abstentions zoning, which requires us leaving the site plan rather than trying to use permits. And then Nan also advised me to direct or to inform the planning board that the equivalent application should be referred to the DPA.
Also, they are not bringing down as you told me.
March 7.
At 5:00, you said?
Five, yes.
I mean, I prefer them in person, but I don't know what the consensus of the board is. I mean, it would be Zoom for Nan and all of us.
Would be Zoom here, we'd have to be here.
She does, she's willing to come in.
Okay.
If her request would.
If she can make it, if this.
Yeah, it's by preference. The in-person just seems to, you know.
I'll contribute a dollar fifty.
Just seems to be more effective, in my opinion. I mean, we're two months out, so if you could figure out what it needs to do, that's okay. I think that's the consensus, so. Anything else? Do you have a map for Boilin? Okay, conflicts check, anybody has a conflict with the application? I think we do, we've seen it already, but.
No.
Okay.
So. If I have something as far as like correspondent stuff, if I can throw in.
Oh, sure.
Where we start, that I think there was a request in for us to all get new printed binders of the new law as soon as possible, and.
Um, I'd also come back to one more item correspondence. Um, we received a resignation from Colleen Watts.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, forgot that.
Yeah.
I just want to mention that.
Yeah.
The planning board benefited from her service, and she was recently sworn in as a council.
Yes, and we thank Colleen for her service.
Is that gonna be a whole new book of it, or just a?
It's gotta be a whole new one printed.
Well, probably.
My book is so outdated.
Yeah.
Probably all renumbered.
Yeah, it is, it's a lot of changes in this last revision.
That's all, okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Conflict check.
Yes, no, maybe so. Seeing none, hearing none, we're good. All business. Boilin?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward?
Okay, so. Where do we stand with everything, the email yesterday, last night?
Right, there was, were there any changes to the map since the meeting?
No, this is the master, the last meeting.
Okay.
Best part of the whole time.
Okay. Well. What we have been advised by council is that the 6.459 acre lot.
Yes.
The, I guess, maybe it's a porch or it's an addition, projects into the front yard setback, so.
So that is a part of the house from when it was built in 1958.
Yeah, understood, understood, and if you weren't creating a subdivision, it could, there'd be no question.
Okay, so what's the question?
It, because it encroaches into the front yard, you're gonna have to make an appearance in front of the zoning board to legalize the non-conforming front yard.
When was that setback distance from the road created, in what year?
I, I, I couldn't answer that.
There's no setback in 1958, then why is it being finished in F?
Like I already said, if you weren't doing a subdivision, there'd be no question.
I understand that, but wouldn't it be grandfathered in?
No.
There's no such thing as.
No, there's no such thing as grandfathering it in when you're making a substantial change to the lot. You're reducing the area of the lot. So we've been, we've been advised that you need to go before the planning, the zoning board to get a front yard variance. And Jay, I don't know what the thing with the driveways and the setback, I didn't know we had a setback for driveways, but.
Yes, we're very good. I was told just to correct the driveway distance off the property line. And now, they want that whole spot, this is like, the survey, I told, they asked the survey to just take it off the property line.
Maybe there's a miscommunication, what I'm seeing on the six, eight, 6.4 acre lot is that the driveway encroaches on the neighbor.
Yes.
So, I, I, yeah, that may be what they're talking about, Jay? Because I didn't know we had a setback issue with driveway, I didn't know that was in the code. Maybe it is, but.
It can be generally referred about what variance is unnecessary. The planning board really should not be making determinations, they should be following the law, not determining what the law is.
I'm just giving an explanation to the applicant of why he's being sent to the zoning board. Whatever the number is, is up to Ed and the zoning board, but I could tell you from my own experience, the driveway encroaching on the neighbor is gonna be a problem with the title search. It's gonna be an issue at that point, so. That's just a bit.
I know for this, there's nothing on any deed or anything that, it's a verbal agreement, and really, nobody uses that section of the driveway anyway, so I mean, you're just, and become obsolete.
Well, you probably have to make it disappear.
Yeah. Like you want to cut it out, take it off.
Yeah, take it off, well, physically make it disappear.
Black grass on it or something.
Well, you may have to deal with the neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, that neighbor, yes, he lives in the city bus. I mean, in the winter time when I plow, I plow that area, I need to clean it for him.
But maybe you can get an easement from him or something, but I'm just telling you to be cautious, that if you go to have a sell this property, that's gonna be a problem, because it's gonna come up as an encroachment on the neighbor.
I'll worry about that.
I don't know if that's what they're asking, you get a variance for, it's not clear.
I understand was, was the variance was that little bit of driveway that's shown on the three and a half acre parcel. Surveyor put the driveway originally, yeah, it marks it on all of the line, and then we were asked to have it left on the three and a half acre parcel side. That's like a little pullout spot, which.
That's all that shows, it shows it on the three and a half.
As long as we were asked for, it wasn't nothing about being in the setback or anything at that time.
I don't know, I don't have any more information other than what was described to me, so.
I didn't, I pulled clarification, but that's law that is shown, that is being proposed for a subdivision is non-conforming. The planner stated that the planning board cannot waive that requirement, and it should go to the DPA.
You can't create another non-conforming law.
Or a non-conforming.
So should I call Ed and discuss with him what to do with the situation and see what he says?
Well, you're going to the zoning board, because we're not gonna approve the subdivision.
Yeah, but I said, go to the zoning board and see how they wanna go about this.
Yeah, the shed may be a problem too, because that, it's in the front yard also. If that shed is there.
That shed I took out of there, I put it in, now it's gone. But when we put that shed in, we were told it had to be behind, had to be parallel, and back in the front of the house.
Okay, then, then you have to have it removed from the map, because then the map isn't correct. So I would have that removed, be my opinion, to have it removed before you go to the zoning board, because the zoning board's gonna see it the way we see it. And you could talk to Ed about the driveway encroachment and what he was talking about aside, about a setback to the driveway, but I mean, otherwise, I don't think, I don't know if there's any comments about the subdivision, we didn't have a problem with it with sketch plans, does anybody have any concerns? No, so, um, can we send them to the planning board with any comment, positives, negatives?
Oh, yeah, it's positive, just to make it.
Right, that was, that was my feeling, so, we'll, we'll advise the zoning, zoning board that we give you a positive recommendation
Okay.
on the variance in order to create the subdivision, so.
Do I have to go to that meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so go to the zoning board meeting.
You have to go to it, there's other things that you have to do with Jay, as far as notices and publications.
Also collect maps so that we don't see those things.
All right, well, it gotta be corrected, so. I don't mind, you can have it, but it has to be correct.
Good idea.
I, it was overlooked, sorry, but we can't do something that's not legal.
Yeah, okay, so I will start that process and.
Yes, okay, very good, good evening.
Well, we have to say we're keeping the, you open the public.
Yeah, we're not closing the public.
So it's gonna stay open.
Okay.
Okay. That's the end of the agenda. New business. Jay, reorganization, what would you?
Don't we have? We're not.
These are, they're the last word.
How are you?
Okay, how are you?
Well, thank you. So we purchased this afternoon, actually, Bill Rose property.
Right, okay, why don't you come to the front, yes.
We have, these are a map, too. We are asking for permission to convert part of the existing structure, which is currently being used as an office, to an accessory apartment. And that will not change the existing footprint of the building, which is non-conforming. But we've been advised by Ed that we don't need a variance.
What do you need?
Um, because it's an accessory apartment to an existing structure in the Ag District, and it is a horse farm, I, we've been advised we need an abbreviated site plan review. So we purchased the lands north of Crest Lane, that one and a half acre parcel south of Crest Lane was retained. Um, so we purchased these two lots, two parcels north. Uh, let's see. We've also been advised the original application included the installation of a septic field, a septic system, we've been advised by Ed that that is permitted. So the only thing that we're asking for permission for today is to convert that little bump out on the side of the barn into an apartment.
Was it, the septic you said is permitted, but it, Jay, wasn't there a movement of the location?
Yes, it's indicated on.
So it's different from, on the other one, it was behind.
Right, so how could it be permitted if it moved?
It is, it is able to be permitted, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's able to be permitted.
It is, it has been approved by Columbia County.
The concept has been approved, I read the letter, but now you've relocated it.
Well, that, so that the letter that is included with my application cites this location as shown on the site plan.
All right, and it's a raised bed system?
Yes.
You'll have to pump it. And how is its size, what is its size for?
Twenty-five by thirty-five, size per.
No, 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 it's a studio, one bedroom, is that what it's?
So it's sized for a one bedroom, and we're putting in a studio.
See, well, there's a septic on it.
It's that little box to the left of the barn?
I got you, okay.
Yeah. I did see something that showed a sketch of the apartment, didn't really show.
That was.
Yeah, but it really doesn't show where it is in the.
It's this.
So there.
Little bump out.
It is the bump.
There were the bathroom. So the bathroom is contained within, yep, in, in that packet that.
Yeah, but where is it in the structure?
So I have a closer view.
Well, it doesn't show it on the plan.
So it is within, I'm sorry, hold on. I mean, this, it is, the bathroom.
It's in the, it's in the projection.
The bathroom is not within the projection, the bathroom is attached just within the footprint of the building.
So, yeah, so the dimension on this was thirty-four.
And that's thirty-four.
Yeah.
Bathroom's not in the upstairs? No, it's on the same level, just not in that little bump out, the main section of the apartment is the bump out.
Oh, okay, so it's in the barn?
Yes, okay, yep.
Well, we should see that location.
So that's noted on the, with proposed apartment and in that packet.
I don't hear it says two bathrooms.
Well, that's weird, which is the outside wall. I guess this is the outside wall.
This is the, this is the outside wall, this is the bump out, this is the shared wall, and that is into the building.
Okay, so, that means north is this way, yeah.
We really need a more complete plan of the barn that shows where the bathroom is.
So we have.
I know what you have, but we don't have it.
Okay.
This was sitting in the conference room, I just saw it two days ago. Can we just let them get a?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, gotta give it back to Aaron, okay, can't keep.
We might.
So Jay, what's the process with this?
Oh. I did not receive the license, so.
Absolutely.
I advised, I think that they were unlikely to get, just remove them from the agenda. No.
So that's.
I will.
That was the apartment.
Friends, I believe that there was also one other feature that a certain member noted that omitted from this.
There shouldn't be anything omitted now, that was current since of four o'clock this afternoon.
In the sheds that were on there?
Oh, yeah, those were long, yes.
But they're not on the ground.
Yeah.
From none of the sheds, all the sheds that are on the drawing.
Are exist, okay, yeah, no.
This is a horse boarding operation, it was going to be a horse boarding.
Already is.
Already is. How many stalls do you have?
Sixteen.
So is there a stream along this back corner?
So it's a drainage ditch.
So it shows up as a stream on NWI map.
Oh, on that parcel?
Yeah, on your parcel.
So that, that parcel is not what we're, that is not subject to the.
This parcel right here, A2?
Only A2, yep.
Yeah.
A2 has no stream on it.
So that corner, that little part of the corner where that culvert is, that's a stream going into a culvert?
Nope, that is only a culvert, it's dry. This, there is a, you can see east edge of field and west edge of brush, there is a little something on the other parcel on the flag lot, uh, tax parcel two-two-one-oh-oh-one-five, but not on the, the, the current A2.
You own both parcels, so.
Yes.
Do you have an intention of merging them?
No.
So it's, you own this other parcel, but is the, the horse operation going into that back parcel, that north parcel?
Not currently, no. Those, uh, those, that fenced area over that culvert is currently completely closed.
Because it does show a stream, then that is your property.
On that parcel, yes.
Right, and, and so we have a hundred and fifty foot buffer.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, the, the site plan should show all the natural resources, and so that, to show that then shows you the hundred and fifty foot buffer.
Understood.
Okay, Jay, what else do we need?
So I would, I would say that you should ask the surveyor to place that on the map, the hundred and fifty foot buffer.
Unfortunately, the surveyor is unavailable for the next eight months. And as such, because surveyors are not allowed to alter each other's work.
They can with permission.
So this is.
We're not gonna receive permission.
Who's this surveyor, surveyor?
Bob Islandberg. On this little, I just noticed you have, on this little piece of paper here, that indicates.
Yeah, first, you from the stream to the, to the house, to the barn?
Excuse me?
Where does the buff, the buffer need to be, the hundred and fifty feet?
From the stream, this is both sides.
To the property line?
No, just both sides of a stream, it's a hundred and fifty foot buffer.
So nothing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that they, I mean, the site plan review says they, all the natural resources need to be shown for that reason, for future, you're gonna expand.
Yep.
Well, you have a problem, because if your surveyor is gone for eight months, this drawing has to be signed and sealed.
Yeah, it's not stamped, is it?
You better figure that out, so.
Okay.
I'm sure it can be adjusted somehow, but without a sealed document, it's not legal. We don't. Anybody could have done.
Required to be.
The survey is required to be.
This is not a survey, though.
This is just a site plan.
I have copies of the survey as well, if you'd like to see that, but this is simply a site plan prepared as such by Bob Island.
Because they did their subdivision.
Subdivision is.
There's updated survey map prepared, it's a survey map.
Right.
Says it right there.
So the survey.
We can argue, sir, but I'm telling you, it's not a.
The survey that is based on.
Sir, this is saying this is a survey, not a cipher.
Can I plead incompetence of the surveyor?
No, he's a licensed professional, you can't plead incompetence with a surveyor. I suggest you find your surveyor and get us the proper document.
So will this require a full new survey?
No, it'll require this to be sealed by you.
Okay.
Well.
And plus.
What, that he changed this to say site plan?
Well. Technically, sorry, surveyors are not supposed to be doing site plans, that's why they don't call them site plants.
Right.
Surveyor only measures existing and does subdivisions, not technically permitted, as far as I know. But a lot of the guys, a lot of the surveyors do it, but they don't call it a site plan. That's where we have issues.
I don't have the, anybody have the law book?
That's.
But it's.
That's all right, but the, that part didn't change, like the.
Just require a public hearing, Jay? No. No.
Site plan review of the half. An eighty seven. So for an abbreviated site plan review. So it says a survey plan is not required. For an abbreviated site plan review. Building spec to remain required at the start. Statement of rough sketch showing the locations and dimensions of the building envelope. Subscription and map, existing conditions. Footprint. Lot area. Butterwell septic. Utilities.
But that really should be changed sooner than later. But how do we do a proper review on something that's not on the survey? I don't know why that's existed in our site plan law for so long. I have a real problem with it because. Anybody could do this, you know that.
I know, we've gotten things that were. And drawn too.
Yeah.
On napkins.
Um, and then it goes back, so then. The other criteria is. For this, so for minor subdivisions, it's the same thing. So the building envelope, all the. Um. The natural resources on it. But then building envelope, driveways. Service water management. Um. I don't know how. If it's. If we're looking at this, if he's using his survey as. Sketch plan. Nobody knows. What comment?
I think we have to get some. An opinion from somebody what we should do with this.
So what is exactly the question we're asking?
This is called a survey map. The applicant saying it's a site plan. But it calls it a survey map, but it's not signed or sealed.
It doesn't need to be signed or sealed. It should not say it's certain. It could say.
Right, so it's one or the other.
It says, it says in the book, it says an abbreviated site plan review. The applicant shall submit a sketch of the parcel on a location map showing boundaries and dimensions contiguous. Blah, 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 planning board for you to sketch. It doesn't say that it has, you're, it doesn't say it has to be a. A survey.
It says very clearly, that's not required survey.
If one would prefer. You could use this, this was what I had originally prepared as a site plan.
But this doesn't show the whole lot.
No, correct.
So that's what this is.
Could we use that?
What we need to say, I think the question is, is it legal?
Right.
I mean, if, if it's in, in, in the. In the code, it's just asks for a sketch of the parcel on a location map. I mean, that's literally what it says. So I think that this clearly. Counts as that regardless of what it says. That it is, I think it does meet the. The criteria of being a sketch of the parcel on a location map. Showing boundaries and dimensions.
But it's. It's, it's noted as an updated survey map. So it's not a survey if it's not signed and sealed, so. It could be.
But it doesn't need to be a survey, it just needs to be a sketch.
But it's identified.
It's identified as a survey, the title need.
Can I ask you, what we, it may be a stupid question, forgive me, this is my first time doing this. If I take a black marker and cross out survey.
No, that's illegal.
Even though it's not signed and sealed.
I don't know, you can get counsel advice on that, but. I wouldn't do it.
Just take that out, it's a survey, that's all. Take that out.
Right now.
No, just, just.
Technically, you're modifying, you're modifying.
I mean, not a piece of paper.
You're modifying. At the long surveyor. Whatever the.
But is that our business?
Yeah.
I mean, this is an ag operation. And.
I was advised by. J L and by. Ed Ferrato. To talk to. Um, Bob Islandberg. Get him to prepare something. I have been asking him for weeks for this. This I received at three o'clock this afternoon when we were walking into our closing. I really don't think I should be punished for this. And as, as, and you know, we pushed to get the closing done so that we could get here. J L was fantastic and has walked us through every step of this. Could I ask? Can we look at the rest of the application? And if there are other issues, we could address that, but could you table this specific? Form for the moment?
What I would say, sir. Off the agenda is. I will have a conversation with Ava. And we will resolve this. I will be transparent with the board about the resolution. Of this, but I do know that for abbreviated site plan. Both an attorney's head plan, as states have stated. During different occasions that if a survey is not required and planning board cannot hold. An applicant to that, and. I do know that. But whether this. Site plan reflects present conditions. And whether. The surveyor can be reading. You change survey to site plan. Are kind of whole matters that can be worked, worked out. Um. With an absentee.
Please be aware, only a surveyor can document existing conditions on a site plan. Or a survey, whatever you want to call it. Anybody can make lines on a paper. Well, we're relying on somebody saying this is correct.
And, and I think that. Through, throughout this entire process, the planning board should, um. Have learned something about.
Can we use this as a site plan instead? This has a depicts the entire parcel and. Shows the location of the approved septic system. And as far as anybody in this room is concerned, I just drew that.
Yo, I'll have a conversation with.
Yes, please, okay. Um. You have any other questions? Feel free, otherwise, uh, we'll see you on the next one.
So we're good with the architectural plans, I mean.
Well, I mean, it should be in context. I don't know how you feel. I, I don't, I don't.
Like showing the whole barn?
Something, showing something somewhere.
So.
How do you get in and out?
The other thing is, yeah, where is the driveway?
So that's noted on that. Quote unquote, survey. On a large format. Existing. Uh, entrance and parking. Along Crest Lane.
So that whole front, that whole portion in front of the barn?
A section of it, yes, where that's where that driveway is. Indicated. I also asked for this, uh, total, we've longed up the scale.
I don't, I don't see it. It says existing entrance and parking, but where is, where do you park? In front of the barn or on the street?
Yes, in front of the barn.
Yeah, Tom and I went there. It's, there's like a parking lot cut out.
Okay. You can't see it on the map.
Yeah, this whole, this whole little irregular sort of. This whole, this rectangle with the little piece of the apartment, thirty five point four feet cut out, all of that in front is parking.
So in the apartment, you have, um. Egress window.
Yes.
I have, uh, multiple egress exits to get out.
Yes.
You know what an egress window is?
Yes, I do.
Well, that's for Ed to check.
Yeah, but he just asked a question. Yeah, I think we just need some better documentation. I think we need something showing. The apartment in the barn or where it's really located. How you get in and out, I mean. If you were to go out that door into the barn and there was a fire, where would you be?
Thank you, I'm sure we, you know. Exits to egress.
Well, you leave the apartment, can you leave it to the outside?
That's the only way you can leave it.
Okay.
So you got two doors, one into the barn.
Yes.
One's that.
On them.
Okay. One of them goes into the barn.
None of it goes into the barn.
It goes into the bathroom, they're not.
No, that, that leaves, that's the front door.
That's the front door.
That's into the bath.
This one's into the bathroom, okay, bathroom.
So you go up the steps or down?
Yeah, yeah, down three steps.
The best.
What it never know?
Where's the second egress?
Those, uh, both of those. Two windows on the corner will be egress windows.
All right, Jay, you'll. Figure this out with the applicant. But. We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. I couldn't save the time.
Okay. What's next, Jay? New business? Well. How do we go about it? What do you want us to do?
Motion for chair.
Motion for chair, Joe, you still want to be the chair?
Sure.
Yeah. Zach is.
Hi. I want to vote, yes. Get the opportunity to show that as well.
Okay. You didn't get to vote, no votes tonight.
No votes.
Okay, uh.
What else? Do we have to vote on the, our meeting?
Vice Chair.
Our.
Chair.
Vice Chair.
Oh, Vice Chair.
Which is Aaron Roberts, she's staying there. He wants to get out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wrong favor.
Hi.
Hi.
That's cancel, first Thursday.
First Thursday of the month, we have our meetings at seven P M. That's a town hall.
Yup.
Like, yes.
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 Fresh.
The other discussion?
Yeah, I have something. We really need to talk to the zoning review committee. This thing about not requiring surveys for abbreviated site plan is just. Not right. If we can't rely on a survey, how can we rely on the drawing being right? And I don't know why it's gone this far. I mean. Do you agree with me? Not having a survey means. So we really need to change that as soon as possible. Everything that comes before us, other than a sketch. Discussion on a, really should. Be accompanied with a survey. I mean, I don't know how any professional can deal with a, with a site plan without having a survey.
You don't know who we care for, that's. And the names that I heard is that. Very different. So we spoke to the way that was inspired by us.
But this.
Yeah, Joe, if I can chime in, I, I understand your concern, right? I worry about the burden that it puts on people for doing minor. Changes. To have to pay for that, and I'm wondering if there's some. Uh. Way of, of a compromise on that.
It, it just, if it involves. A site plan, it should come from a survey.
And I do have a list, I will.
I, I just, I understand the burden, but. Um, you know, it's one thing to get a possession survey, it's another thing to get a topo on a hundred acres. Um, you know, if, if it's a minor thing. Maybe an older survey will work, but I, I don't know how we can review something, not knowing what the parameters of the property really are. I mean.
May, maybe I'm misunderstanding what it presented, but, but he. Cause it, cause not being there, but, uh. He wasn't working off a survey. To show. The bump out?
It, 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 it said a survey. But then they were trying to say it's a site plan. So if it doesn't say site plan, it's a survey, because it says it's a survey.
Right, but so if somebody takes a survey and they. Draw out and dimension out a building or some, or something on there. You, you're saying that wouldn't be acceptable as a site plan? To show.
Not my.
With it. But, but so, so what, what that requires then is the person to go out and have another professional. Remeasure and redraw that?
Yeah.
That is a question.
If it's. I mean. It, it, it. As a licensed professional. It difficult. To commit to something if it didn't come from somebody that's licensed and measured it and put it on a piece of paper. Um, things can be radically, things can be radically wrong. People could think their house is on their property, and there's times. When the property line runs through the house, I mean. You, you don't know what can go wrong if it's hasn't been properly surveyed. So there's, there's a lot of issues, not starting with a document that's, that's been prepared by a professional. And any engineer isn't going to work with, well, here's a piece of paper with a square on it. They're going to require a survey to start the process. So I think, you know, it.
Does Ed require a survey or a building permit? Cause there's a lot of building permits for new homes and things that do not. Trigger an abbreviated site plan review.
Um, I don't.
He, he does, he does not. I, you know, I just, I just put a garage up, and as long as it meets the criteria. And it was drawn in on my survey. That was enough for him.
But yeah, you have it.
Yeah.
Have the survey, yeah.
There's, there's multiple things. And. Those comments were noted.
Yeah, if you take a survey and you draw a site plan. And you put them next to each other and they agree, yeah, I agree, putting a garage on a site plan. Doesn't require a new survey, it doesn't require the surveyor to put it on the map. But if you have nothing to start with, what would you have done?
You mean if we didn't have, right, that, are you right? You'd need some survey of your property, absolutely.
Need some place to start. The survey.
So our objection, our objection to this document is just that it's not notarized. As such as a survey? It doesn't have.
It had a lot of issues. It had a lot of issues. It wasn't complete. It was piecemealed. There was a rectangle that showed an apartment. We don't know really where it is in the barn.
Yeah, 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 that, yeah, that I agree with all that stuff.
Bathroom, we know a lot of stuff missing. We're not doing, you know. Um, the building code review, but if we, we're asked to approve something, we really need to see the whole picture. I mean.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm going back to the self saying like you did a garage, I did a, a deck, right? So I took my survey and. Drew out where the deck would be and. Gave the measures and the dimensions to the property boundaries off of that.
Right, and if you're not with. Of a setback, it's never going to be a critical issue, but you know, if you don't have. To start with the survey, what, what do you start with? A rectangle?
No, no, I, I agree, I agree. It should be a, a fixed survey to start with. I just want to make sure we're not. Requiring people if they want to do something like the garage or like a deck or something like that, have to go out, hire somebody to. You know, redimension the whole thing and put it on paper, because that's a, that's a costly burden.
Understood.
Get this much.
He blew this up, took away this whole section. Okay, and, and. And walked out on this, it would be an acceptable site plan.
I, I am not going to come, comment on the legality of it. He's, he's document, he's, he's altering. A document that was prepared by a survey. Whether it's sealed or not, I don't know where the law goes. But it not supposed to alter. A document that was prepared by a survey. Whether it's sealed or not, I don't know where the legality is, but that's the law. It's state education. Can't, you can't. Even an engineer's drawing, you can't just modify.
No, I understand, but if he took, you have a survey in one hand.
He can do whatever he wants with it.
And then you took this and you made this a site plan by locking it up and taking this off.
Right.
So now the site plan.
Yeah, he could, he could copy and paste and make a document if he wants.
Okay, I'm just.
He, he can, it's done all the time. But I want the code to say you need a last survey for any abbreviated site plan, site plan, because that'll take the discussion off the table. And it, it, I mean, this guy had a survey. And he had the documentation he needed, he just didn't wanna go have the surveyor adjust it, so it was clear, and, you know. So.
These, these uh, surveys right now. They're ridiculous to get hold of.
I, I, trust me, there's, I know.
You can't get, you can't get.
I know, that's, that's. That's not our problem.
No, I know, yeah.
You know, that he's been, you know. To the nth degree persecuted on this, it's not our problem, we didn't do anything to him. You know, everybody wants to cut corners and, and take shortcuts and then. They want us to make adjustments so that we can approve something that's not complete or not. We don't know if it's correct. I mean, just, somebody just said they, they took the shed down, well, we have a drawing in front of us, said there's a shed there in the front yard.
Yeah.
Okay. Who are we relying?
Need to know.
We need to know that it's there or not there. You know, it's, it's not a, you know, it's not a game, it's, it's, it's a law. Anyway, that being said. I don't know, we wait for Jay to come back, I don't know where he's ready to, but I.
We want you to have a gavel.
I want a big one.
I agree. That was an idea, but I'm just expanding, I didn't mean to steal your idea. Oh, it's good.
Can I get a motion to come? I need a motion.
I think you gotta get a hold.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor. See here, ma'am.